I call the meeting of the San Juan Unified School District Board of Education to order. At this time, we will move into closed session to discuss one personnel matter pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, Superintendent's Evaluation.
Thank you, President Viasquez. As you are moving into closed session for the board, we do have two members of the public who have joined us for the call to order. At this time, members of the public, the board is going into closed session, which is not open to the public. You're going to be removed from the meeting at this time. If you'd like to join the public session of the meeting, which will start at approximately 6:30 p.m., we'd ask that you return to the district homepage, www.sanjuan.edu, at or after 6:15 p.m., at which time you will have a link to the public meeting available to you there. Thank you for joining us, and we will be pausing for one moment while we adjust the meeting for closed session. So to our attendees, we want to offer an apology for the delay in starting tonight's meeting. We were having some technical difficulties with the login mechanism for tonight's meeting. We did change up how we're doing the meetings due to some issues with our previous board meeting. So we do hope this is a more secure format, but we did have some difficulties tonight. So we are giving just a few moments for folks to go ahead and get that page refreshed and get logged in. And then we will go ahead and get started with tonight's meeting. We have not started yet, so you have not missed anything.
Mr. Allen, it's my understanding you're still letting folks in the meeting, correct?
That is correct. In this format, they will actually be able to come in as they join. So we are up to 20 attendees at this point.
Okay, that being the case, I'm gonna go ahead and commence the meeting.
Very good.
Okay. I call the meeting of the San Juan Unified School District Board of Education back to order. Thank you all for your patience as we get used to our new platform. Due to the executive orders issued by Governor Newsom due to the COVID-19 outbreak, tonight's meeting is being conducted via the Zoom platform. The meeting is being audio and video recorded, and the recording may capture sounds and images of those attending this meeting. The recording will be posted on the district website. We thank you for joining us and ask for your patience as we use this format in an effort to maximize access and participation during this time of social distancing and other restrictions. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
To the flag
of the United States of America One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice Good evening and welcome. I am Paul Viasquez, Board President. Joining me tonight is Dr. Michael McKibben, Board Vice President, Ms. Zima Creason, Board Clerk, Ms. Pam Costa, and Mr. Saul Hernandez, Board Members. Superintendent Kern and other staff members are also in attendance. Before we begin, I'd like to review the two methods that are available to submit public comments for tonight's meeting. You may send an email to boardcomment@sanjuan.edu. Again, that's boardcomment@sanjuan.edu. Comments that were emailed before 6:00 p.m. today have already been shared with all board members. Comments emailed after 6:00 p.m. tonight, including those submitted during the meeting, may be read during the meeting depending on time restrictions. Comments may only be submitted on an agenda item up until the time that the agenda item has been discussed. The second option is on the Zoom platform where you may use the Raise Your Hand feature. When you are called on, you may share a comment via audio during the meeting. Please note that all comments are subject to a two-minute limit or approximately 300 words per written comment. And with that, we are at Item D, Approval of the Minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes for April 28?
So moved.
It's been moved by Ms. Costa and seconded by Mr. Hernandez. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? That was unanimous. We are at Item E1, Staff Report. Superintendent Kern.
Thank you, President Viasquez. I kinda wanted to just give an update on a number of items tonight with, to both the board and the community. So I've got about four items I'll go through, and then we'll probably, if there isn't a specific item on some of these things, be doing this over the next couple of meetings or even further on. So the first item I wanted to talk about is, we are developing a plan for our custodial staff to return. Our goal is to ensure confidence when parents, students, and staff return that our schools were effectively cleaned and sanitized over the summer. Custodians are safely working, are currently safely working to support food services, teacher access and provide site presence on a modified part-time schedule. On May 26, custodians will be placed on a full-time summer cleaning schedule, and we will be deployed in teams to provide thorough and documented cleaning and sanitizing. And one of the things that we're actually doing as we look forward as well, like when you go into restaurants or other places, you see when it was last cleaned. We're putting some of those orders into place so we can keep track of how often and when things have been cleaned. In order to bring custodians back safely, we will be training them on social distancing protocols with the proper use of personal protective equipment and monitoring to ensure safe practices. We are currently working on plans by divisions of what material pickup, including yearbook distribution and turning in Chromebooks will be. I've had a couple of people reach out to me asking if we could keep all students with the Chromebooks over the summer, and I let them know that we need to collect all of them in order to get an accurate inventory of the devices in order to be prepared for the fall. Students who participate in summer school, though, will hold on to their devices throughout the summer. Speaking of the fall, I wanted the board and community to know that we are meeting weekly with groups to discuss possible scenarios for what school might look like in the fall. We are breaking these groups out by ECE, elementary and secondary, as each of these pose different challenges. I know the County Office of Education has also convened a working group that includes representatives from districts throughout the county, and they will be providing insights and guidelines for reopening. We are represented on the committee by Deputy Superintendent of Schools and Student Support Melissa Bassinelli and Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources Paula R. Paolo. Additionally, later this week or early next week, a family survey will go out district-wide to help collect feedback to guide this work as well. We are currently working on a budget update document that we actually sent out to our managers and site leaders today. And after the governor releases his May revision later this week, we will be putting out a communication to our community as well. We are taking immediate action to reduce future costs where possible with a reduction, for example, in summer school, which you will hear later on as one example. We want to do as much as we can now as we know we will need to make significant reductions next year and in future years. So thank you for that, and if there are any questions or comments, I can try and respond.
Thank you, Superintendent Kern. Are there any questions? From the board? Seeing none, we are now at Item E2, Board Appointed District Committees. We will hear from Jennifer Morgan, Chair of the Curriculum and Standards Committee.
Give me one moment to get Mrs. Morgan on the line, please. Mrs. Morgan, your microphone should be unmuted.
Thank you. Good evening.
Mrs. Morgan?
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect. It booted me out and then brought me back in somehow, so here I am.
Apologies and thank you for your patience.
No, navigating all these waters together. So, good evening, President Viasquez, members of the board, Superintendent Kern, and everyone else attending this evening. The CNS Committee met virtually on May 6 to learn of the new course adoptions coming before you this evening. We voted unanimously to recommend the approval of all 14 of them. We were particularly thrilled about Mesa Verde's writing for the stage, and we would love to see this class or one like it eventually offered to students outside of the CTE pathway, down the road and at more sites. The art of effective storytelling is obviously a valuable skill across all careers and cultures, and creative classes like this allow our students to practice and perfect the art of using their voice. As a side note, despite the committee's irregular experience of member turnover this year, we were pleased to have our newest members join us last week for what I consider to be the most exciting CNS Committee meeting of the year is hearing all the new courses. I would like to note that since we had a handful of teachers and district staff participating that evening, Assistant Chair Mile Jenkins took the opportunity to bestow a committee-wide thank you for the tremendous amount of hard work and rapid responses that we, as parents, are all seeing from the schools in the district. We offer our heartfelt gratitude to everyone behind the scenes doing the best that they can. We look forward to future conversations about what was learned through this experience as we continue to strive towards a more equitable education for everyone. Thank you again and have a lovely evening.
Thank you very much, Ms. Morgan, for joining us and for the lovely update. I think a few of us did a couple rounds on the curriculum committee before joining, so appreciate hearing that update. Mr. Allen, do we have any other reports from Board Appointed District Committee, Employee Organizations, or other district organizations?
We have not been notified of any comments at this time.
With that, we are at Item E5, and there are no closed session actions to report. We are at Item F, Visitor Comment. Mr. Allen, will you please give instructions to those in attendance via Zoom on how they can raise their hand if they have a comment at this time?
I'd be happy to, President Viasquez. Attendees, if you'd like to give a comment at this time, this would be the appropriate time to offer a comment for an item that is not on tonight's agenda. If your comment is for an item that is on tonight's agenda, we would ask that you hold your comment until that agenda item is called so that the board can hear your comment when they discuss that item. Again, if your comment is about an item not on tonight's agenda, now would be the appropriate time to offer a comment. You may do so by raising your hand. To raise your hand, if you are using a desktop platform, either a web browser or the Zoom Desktop app, down at the bottom of the participant list, you should have a Raise Hand button. If your participant list is not showing, you may need to click the Participant button on the toolbar. For those who are on a mobile device, the Raise Hand button is typically in the toolbar located at the bottom of your screen. And for those who are on a phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand at this time. And we do have one individual with a raised hand raised, President Viasquez.
Okay, yes, I see Mr. Rafferty. I'm gonna do, with the raised hand. Mr. Rafferty, are you, you can hear and are available, please, begin your comments momentarily. I almost got ahead of myself. I would like to remind the public that comments are limited to two minutes. Under the Ralph M. Brown Act, the board is not allowed to comment on items that are not on the agenda, so we are not ignoring your comments. We just can't respond to any individual comments. The superintendent can refer items to staff who can follow up with you. With that, as indicated by Mr. Allen, we do have Mr. Rafferty's hands raised, and that's the only raised hand I see at this time, but certainly invite others to indicate with a raised hand if they'd like to speak after Mr. Rafferty. Mr. Rafferty, begin when you are able and would like to. Mr. Rafferty, you're on mute.
Over the weekend, I received a document that had been requested five weeks ago, a letter which you apparently, your superintendent apparently sent to the governor, in which it is stated that you reached out to me and that I was a demanding attorney who refused to discuss delaying district elections. This is, of course, the opposite of the truth. At the same time you were complaining, drafting this letter complaining to the governor, you had, your attorney had put in writing a commitment to proceed, and was not responding to my suggestions as to how we might help, how we might work together, wasn't returning phone calls. You misled the governor, and it gave me a sense of perspective that there are some things more important than staying in office. You reversed your roles without of the superintendent. This letter should have been sent by the board because it's about governance. You are not on the front line of the response to COVID-19. That is what your superintendent should be doing. So it's not just a dishonest act, it's a profoundly selfish act because it's gonna have ramifications throughout the state that will make it more difficult to come to a reasonable resolution and to maintain lawful elections this November. So I regret that, but I'm very proud of my client and of myself for having been honest and accommodating and tried to make the best of this horrible situation. I would never take advantage of COVID-19, and none of you should have. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Allen, I see no other hands raised at this time. Do you have anything on your end, or has there since been anything received electronically?
I do have two emails we have received since 6 o'clock. Both are in regards to having trouble accessing the meeting. So I do not believe those were intended necessarily to be read publicly. Both very much say that they were having trouble accessing the meeting. So I will forward those along to the board just for transparency sake as well. But those are the only two we have received since 6:00 p.m.
Okay, I'm gonna just take a pause really quickly to see if anybody else would like to speak at this time by, by raising their hand. Actually, Mr. Allen, would you just go over one more time the Raise Your Hand function so people know how it works?
I'd be happy to. Again, if you are on a desktop platform, either a web browser or the Zoom Desktop app, the Raise Hand button is typically at the lower portion of the Participants list. Sometimes you will need to click the Participants button in the toolbar to display that list. If you are on a mobile app, the Raise Hand button is in the black toolbar at the bottom of your screen usually. And if you have dialed into tonight's meeting, you should be able to press star nine to be able to raise your hand and offer a comment at this time.
Okay, seeing none, I'll note that there's also an opportunity for visitor comment at the end of the meeting, and with that, we will move on to our next item. We are at Item G, the Consent Calendar. Mr. Allen, do we have any public comments for items that are on the consent calendar?
We have not received any written comments for items on the consent calendar. If there are members of the public who are attending with us tonight and would like to offer a public comment on an item on the consent calendar, we would invite you to raise your hand at this time. Again, you can do that by pressing the Raise Hand button located at the bottom of the Participants panel if you're on a desktop platform, or in your toolbar if you are on a mobile platform, or star nine if you are on a call-in device.
Seeing none at this time, do any board members wish to remove any items from the consent calendar? Is there a motion to approve items G1 through G10?
I move that we adopt items G1 through G10.
There's a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Creason. It's been moved by Dr. McKibben and seconded by Ms. Creason. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous. We are now at Item I1, Revised Summer Learning Programs 2020. Mr. Messer, please begin when you are ready.
Oh, good evening. I need just a second here to pull up my screen.
Take your time.
And my first time pulling this up, I think most disabled participating screen sharing.
Let's see what we can do on our side here. I believe that's a function Mr. Allen has to provide. I'm not sure I'm, not one that I can do.
Trent, can you help me with that? They won't let me pull up to share a screen.
One moment, Mr. Messer.
Mr. Messer, give that a try again.
Okay, there we go.
Thank you, Mr. Allen, for your assistance.
Okay, good evening, President Viasquez, members of the board, Superintendent Kern, and Ms. Cunningham. Tonight, I am presenting with Dr. Deborah Calvin and Director Brett Wolf to update you on the status of our upcoming 2020 summer programs. This last fall, we presented to you our summer 19 programs through updates of the miscellaneous programs that you see on this screen. As you can see, we were, we had a pretty thorough program, and that program's been running pretty consistently over the last few years. But as we move forward, we, due to the situations, are gonna need to make some adjustments.
Yes. We're having a hard time seeing your screen. The PowerPoint's not up.
You are screen sharing. Do you see it?
I do see it on my end. You are on Summer Learning Programs 2020 slide?
Yeah.
Yes, I can see it.
I can see it as well.
I can see it.
Okay. So, for 2020, due to the national pandemic and our summer, our summer learning programs are gonna have to make some adjustments. Unfortunately, we're going to shift to a distance learning model similar to what we're doing this, the fall, this spring semester at our regular schools, which means we're eliminating the seat-based model. We're gonna be reducing the scope of what we offer. So the screen before showing you all the different programs, you know, for the need for keeping students safe and the ability to deal with the economic effects of the pandemic, we're gonna have to prioritize and be very strategic in what we offer our students. So, moving forward, going into this summer, our main focus will be on high school credit recovery, and we're gonna continue to offer a more limited academic support programs for our English learners, students with disabilities, and other at-risk students. So I will be taking you through our credit recovery piece to our summer programs, and then Dr. Calvin will take us through our other academic supports. So, our main focus of our summer programs typically would have been a seat-based summer school program, a very traditional program that has been at Del Campo for the last few years. We're gonna move that to a distance learning model. We're gonna continue our independent study model through El Surino, and in that program, we've had, oh, pretty close to 1,000 students participate using Apex through independent study for mostly credit recovery. But because of the financial situation and the safety and the things that we're doing, we have made reductions in the scope of our programs. One of the programs we're not gonna offer is the High School Intercession Program. This was a program that was a three-week program for students at their high school to immediately go into a credit recovery session before summer school, going to summer school. So that's gonna be just blended into the regular summer school program to a certain extent because we won't be able to continue that process. One of our programs that has grown over the years is our math camp. This is, was for our transition to math students, the 2, 3, the 5, 6, and then the 8 to 9 program that we offered in August every year. So that program, we're gonna have to reduce as well. And a hard decision that we also are facing is that because of space, acceleration has been an opportunity for a number of our high school students over the last few years because we have the capacity to serve them. But we're gonna be moving away from that, and the main focus will be dedicated to serving as many students who need credit recovery for graduation as possible. So, our prioritization, prioritization is for at-risk students of not graduating, and those who are the most credit deficient. This is going to, we believe, with the reductions of our summer program, such things, by not having a seat-based program, we will no longer need to provide administrators for summer school. We will no longer need to provide campus monitors, custodial work at the end of the day, a full group of food services folks to help us feeding the students. Now, we'll still have food, you know, serving food during the summer, but we've been able to reduce quite a bit of the overhead cost of running summer, and we believe we can streamline our program to support as many of our students that will need credit recovery as possible. In the scope of what we shared with you last fall, we served probably close to 2,500 students through summer, our 912 summer programs. Now, we know that we have to serve who we believe the most at-risk through the students that are credit deficient, but we do have options for our students that want to accelerate or potentially have conflicting schedules or schedules at the traditional high schools where they're trying to take courses to get ahead. So we know that Options for Youth has been a program in our district that students have used during the summer. Brigham Young University actually is offering free courses this summer for students for advancement. And we also have our partners at American River College that will be available to offer our students classes for acceleration, and then obviously our students will have options for charters. But I do want to reiterate, our goal is to meet the needs of our credit-deficient students, keeping them on track for graduation as best as possible. And as we work to identify, we've been identifying the students, our counselors from each of the high schools have been working with Tracy Locke, our district counselor on the organization of developing the summer programs with Mr. Wolf, but actually trying to categorize the students and where they fit in and meet the needs the most. So, and Mr. Wolf can talk about that in more detail if necessary. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Calvin to share with you that programs will continue for academic support for our students.
Thank you, Mr. Messer. The goal of the 2020 Summer Academies is to promote equitable outcomes by offering academic distance learning and educational materials to our most at-risk students in grades K through 12. When planning, we specifically targeted long-term English learners, newcomers, Title I students, and students with special needs. Portus is a Title III funded program designed to provide online reading and math intervention for long-term English learners in grades 5 through 8. We have 200 slots available for this distance learning program. Summer Support for Newcomers is a distance learning program designed to promote language acquisition and academic intervention through online curriculum and primary language support for approximately 200 high school students who have been in the country for less than two years who have tested at LPAC Level 1. High school teachers, bilingual instructional assistants, and a counselor are all at hand to assist students with their graduation and career and college planning goals. The program is funded through the Cal New Grant Title III. The Extended Year program is for our specialist students, and I'm gonna go into more detail into that program in our next slide. Project-Based Summer Academy is a program that supports our Title I students. It provides students in grades 2 through 8 the opportunity to develop reasoning, academic language, and STEM concepts. Students engage in hands-on project-based learning using an online platform that provides support as they work through engaging weekly assignments. We have 900 slots available for students, again, in grades 2 through 8, who attend Title I schools. And then finally, for Title I, we have our Early Literacy Boxes, and these are kits that provide students with hands-on activities to prepare them for early literacy in the classroom setting. Each kit includes decodable text, children's literature, and printable activity. A parent guide and online support as needed is also a component of this program. We have 1,600 kids that will be mailed out in July to all outgoing TK and kinder students attending Title I schools. Next slide. Our Extended School Year, or ESY, is provided to students receiving special education services who are at risk of regression during summer break. Qualification is determined by individual education plan teams at the student's annual meeting. ESY is provided to students age three to 22 and it's based on need. The 2020 ESY program will be conducted via distance learning and administration of ESY will be handled by Laura Roth, LaVista and Ralph Richardson administrators. ESY curriculum reflects an extension of the current school year instruction and teachers will continue to use a variety of platforms, a grade level curriculum with accommodations and modifications as needed in students' IEPs or as identified in students' IEPs. Additional support staff will also continue to provide services as needed. Mr. Messer?
Thank you, Dr. Calvin. So our next steps, as we quickly transition to this, the new model and with the reductions is, it's a necessity to communicate our changes of our learning programs to all of our staff, our parents, our guardians, our students in our community. And we plan to, to start messaging as soon as possible in that area. We're also continuing to identify and prioritize students for our credit recovery programs. And when we talk about identifying, we're talking about who would be better served in the distance learning versus the online Apex through El Sereno. So we're really trying to go deeper into what students could be served better in each of those two programs. Because within the El Sereno Independent Study Program through Apex, students drop in for a course, they can complete a course and then be done within a limited amount of time, which would then open a new seat and another student could enter. So there's a lot of ways in which we're going to do our best to, to support our students and make sure we can get as many in as possible. And then finally, we need to hire our staff and, you know, we've had a very large group of, of staff over the years. So we really are working with HR to, to hire our staff, but also be cognizant of the fact that many folks who've worked during the summer this year may not have that opportunity. And so we want to make sure we're thoughtful and that we communicate with them where we are and why we're doing what we're doing. And with that, President Viasquez, we're open for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Messer and Dr. Calvin. I will go through and invite questions or comments from my colleagues in the manner in which we would typically be sitting on the dais. So I will start with Mr. Hernandez and feel free to give your comments and questions now or feel free to indicate that you'd like to pass. Mr. Hernandez?
Yeah, just a quick question. Mr. Messer, is it safe to assume that the, the programs that were fee-based, will those be eliminated as well?
As of today, yes, we believe, like our sports camp program, due to the current restrictions, those are on pause and we won't know until probably later in this month what the, what it's, if that's even an opportunity. But as of right now, we've, we've paused on even the fee-based programs.
And that includes Camp Winters as well?
As of right now, yes, Camp Winters as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Ms. Costa?
Thank you so much for the report. I, I am really grateful that there are opportunities for students who need coursework in order to be on the path to graduation. I was also, I appreciated, Mr. Messer, you contacting me because to reassure me that students could participate in our community colleges or BYU or even a charter school that didn't meet the qualifications for the programs we're offering. And I guess because of my elementary experience, I was so grateful, Dr. Calvin, for the kits that are going out. It's, you've offered such amazing things in summer school with the camps for early elementary kids and to have those materials going out. It's not the same as having them in classes, being used to the school experience, but it certainly will make a difference for next year. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Ms. Costa. Ms. Creason?
Just a question. Has this news of the reduction of programming in the summer been shared widely with students or families yet? And if not, when do we expect that will happen?
One of the purposes of tonight is to share with the board that we are going to move in this direction and we are going to start communicating with our community very, very soon to let them know. We know we have to communicate not only what programs we are going to offer, but the ones that we're not. So we're working on that as soon as possible to be sent out.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just add something real quick. Zima, so we've been communicating with the counselors this for several weeks that there's going to be a cut. We, we're not sure exactly how deep it's going to be. So we've been encouraging the counselors for the students that are just trying to get ahead to look at the other options. So this has been going on for weeks, you know, maybe even coastal month now. Just that we're looking at, the, the program's going to look a little bit different. So it shouldn't come as a big shock to a lot of students that typically take advantage of the acceleration.
That's really helpful. And I'm sorry, I can't tell who just spoke. Was that Jim?
That was Brett Wolf.
Brett.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Wolf. I apologize. Thank you. That's really helpful. And it's just so unfortunate because we have such wonderful programming and I always get so much feedback about how wonderful it is, especially with Camp Withers. So it really is a shame, but you know, it is what it is and just hope folks can get the news sooner than later so they can make alternative arrangements if at all possible.
Thank you, Ms. Creason, and thank you staff for the presentation. I know historically we've had a pretty robust summer learning program. And so I don't want to focus too much on how disappointed I am about it not being as robust. I certainly think, given the circumstances, I appreciate the prioritization of kind of student populations, making sure that we are doing everything we can to support our, our juniors and make sure that they stay on course and have every option there. So appreciate the options listed here. It's just so hard to, to watch our programs kind of get altered, but this is, this is the name of the season. It's accommodations and modifications as needed. And one question I have is, oh, um, I do have a question, but also I will acknowledge that I skipped over you, Dr. McKibben. I also cannot see, is there a way to temporarily reduce the screen share? Because typically I'm looking at everybody. So I would have caught that before I went on and on and on. Um, I will pause my thoughts. And Dr. McKibben, do you have any questions or comments?
Just, just a quick, I'm trying to do fast math and Mr. Messer talked about last year, we served 2,500 students. And if I, Dr. Calvin's numbers, and this is very fast math, I'm 400, 1300, and then she also mentioned 1,600, which takes us up to 2,900. Am I correct that, that we have the potential in terms of slots of serving more students this, in this online virtual summer school than we had when it was live last year? Even though the programs are different, but we're still going to serve what it seems to be a lot of students.
From the high school perspective, and then I'll let Deborah, the Dr. Calvin, share. From the high school perspective, with the reductions that we're able to make and the overhead costs of what summer schools have been in the past, depending on staying within and below our budget where we are. I don't know if we can match it, but our goal is to, to do our best to. But I can't tell you today that we are going to have the resource to completely match ours. Dr. Calvin?
Okay, thank you. So last year, we served just over 1,300 students. That was direct instruction in our programs, including Camp Kinder. This year, I'm going to say we're touching 2,900 students, but only 800 of them will be through distance learning and the others will receive the kits.
Kits, okay. Okay, so, yes.
With the elimination of, of the High School Intercession, the reduction of the math camps and those numbers were included in that, that larger. So credit recovery itself did not consume that entire, and throw in the acceleration students and those that were there for impacted schedules. So credit recovery students alone didn't match, wasn't that total number. So I apologize.
Is there any kind of preliminary estimate on how much the, the summer program this year will cost compared to last year?
I can talk to the, the title programs. Last year, we spent over $800,000 on programs over the summer. And this year, we anticipate approximately $463,000.
From the, the secondary side of it, our budget is somewhere around 500, a little over $500,000 to run our summer school programs. And I believe that we, we are going to be reducing that overall number and that's something we'll be working through with Cabinet to find out what level that we're going to be able to meet the needs of hopefully as many of our credit recovery students.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Dr. McKibben. I'm also going to pause and check with Mr. Allen to see if we had any visitor comments on this item so that if so, my colleagues have an opportunity to reflect if they would like. Mr. Allen?
We've not received any written comments on this item at this time. However, I have seen a couple of hands going up from our attendees. So this time, if we do have attendees with us who would like to comment on this agenda item, we would invite you to do so at this time. Again, if you'd like to offer a comment, please raise your hand. You can do so by pressing the raise hand button located at the bottom of the participants panel. If you are on a desktop platform, either a web or app on the desktop or by clicking the raise hand button on the mobile device located at the bottom of the screen. If you are calling into the meeting, star nine should raise your hand. And it looks like we do have a few hands raised. Ms. Viasquez?
Yes, I see three raised hands. I'll go ahead and call out their name. I have Gwen Dellinger, an individual by the name of Stinson, and Mr. Scott Rafferty and Leo Roman. There's now four. So I will call based on the order in which I saw them, which we will begin with Gwen Dellinger, followed by Mr. Stinson. Gwen, please begin when you are ready.
Okay, I'm sorry. I hit that raise hand by mistake. Dr. Calvin answered the question.
No problem and glad to hear it. Thank you for joining us. Um, and then we have Mr. or Stinson, I made an assumption there, sorry, Stinson next. And I think, just as an FYI, I think participants have to unraise their hand, it looks like, after they've spoken. But we will go to Stinson, followed by Scott Rafferty. Please begin when you're ready.
To our attendee Stinson, it looked like your microphone was unmuted and it looks like it is. There we go.
Sorry. I had multiple pop-ups appear on my screen and when I answered them all, it decided to mute my mic again. I'm sorry. I was actually originally here for the approval of the classes and then just decided to stay listening. I'm a teacher over at Maryland High School. So I just wanted to comment like on the summer school thing. I totally understand all of a sudden you guys said about cuts, but I, I have heard things like if they're an enrolled student at our school district, that they're allowed to attend like an online class at like ARC. Is that still true? Do we know if that's still true?
Yes, yes.
Because what I, I'm sorry, go ahead. Because what I, what I was thinking, what can help offset some of the students who are trying to get ahead and swallow a lot of stuff is if in the San Juan Boltons that get put out like every week, if there was an actual thing to address that for students that are trying to get ahead, here's like some alternative resources that are available since that's not in San, it doesn't cost San Juan for them to do that. As long as that assumption's correct, that it doesn't cost them. I think that would also help because I have some students who, you know, are wanting to go back and retake courses. But as a teacher, I'm seeing some discouraging number or some discouraging credit that's going to come out of the distance learning. And so I'm also worried about the impact of summer school next year. And so for some students who know they might need to make up credits, maybe that's an alternative path for them. I don't know if that's appropriate or not. So I just thought I'd put that out there as a, you guys would figure out what, what to do. But we actually put that out to the students. That would be great.
Thank you, Mr. Stinson. Next, we have Scott Rafferty, followed by Leah Roman.
Well, I would just like to note that I sent two comments in writing earlier and when they, when there was difficulty getting on the call, again, for the third Zoom meeting in a row, I chatted to each of you asking how long the meeting had gone on and referring to these two messages. And neither of them was read. I've sent them again to board comment. And it's unfortunate if they're read at the end of the meeting, but it just doesn't seem like other jurisdictions have these technical and parliamentary problems with receiving public comment on Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rafferty. Leah Roman. Please begin when you're ready.
Ms. Viasquez, it looks like Leah Roman is on an older version of Zoom. So I'm going to need to promote Leah Roman to a panelist for a moment to enable the microphone. So give me one moment.
Okay.
Can you hear me okay now?
Yes.
Great. Thank you for doing that. Sorry about the technical difficulties. I'm an instructional assistant at Trajan Elementary in Orangeville. And I had a question about the staff. When, when you hire staff for summer school, is there going to be training available, you know, since distance learning is all new? I just want to make sure that there's going to be training for the instructional assistants so we can help our students.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Thank you.
And are there any further public comments at this time?
President Viasquez, I'm wondering if you could maybe once more repeat why we're not asking, answering the specific questions. I just feel like a couple of those comments have very specific questions and I just want folks to know why we're not providing an answer specifically, but that staff will follow up.
Sure. And on these items, because they are pertaining to the agenda item, we actually can address them. I just wanted to get through all of public comment and then I was actually going to reiterate this Roman's question on, on her behalf. But first I'll just see if there's any other participants at the moment.
I apologize.
No, not, don't, none needed. We're all learning. At this moment, I don't see any other raised hands at this time. And so I'm actually going to go ahead and first, I had a question somewhat similar to the comment that Mr. Stinson made and that I'll just point out that there are, it was clear in the presentation that there is available options for other student enrollment the way there have been years in the past. And I'll invite staff to clarify that if and when necessary and certainly agree with the appropriate promotion of available activities as acceptable. But I did have a similar question and that's just here noted on slide four. There are other student options and I imagine that there's a wide list of both community colleges and four-year colleges and other higher educational institutions that are, that are offering some sort of similar online learning opportunities. And I was wondering if staff could just speak to any of that exploration and if we'll be able to kind of promote and offer more extensive resources.
Yeah, hi, Ms. Viasquez. This is Brett Wolf. I'll go ahead and address this.
Yeah. Hi, Ms. Viasquez. This is Brett Wolf. I'll go ahead and address this. So we work with the counselors. We meet with them every Wednesday morning. So we meet with them tomorrow. And so each student, what they'll do is they, they, the counselors are the ones that actually sign them up through the district summer school. So we've been working with them and so they'll be the first to know that, for example, if they have a student that needs, you know, say they want to take government or economics during the summer. So if we can't accommodate those students in San Juan Unified, then they'll be the ones that will be directing them to opportunities for youth or American River or just where the options are. So the students aren't on their own to go find these resources. We, we guide them through the counseling departments.
Great. Thank you very much. And can someone from staff please speak to the, the training question that was asked in terms of staff, staff training into these programs for these programs?
So I can tell you for secondary work that we will build in distance learning training for summer school too. Dr. Calvin, I think the IA question is probably more related to you.
Right. We do have some ongoing training occurring now for our existing programs and that will continue.
Great. Thank you. And I had an additional question and forgive me if it was already answered, but I'm just curious, what is our typical enrollment numbers with regards to the extended school year option on, on slide six? And what do we anticipate that being now? Correct my understanding if an enrollment number is wrong in terms of how this works.
So I do not provide enrollment numbers for special education because those are IEP driven. I can, I don't know if D Johnson is available to give us kind of an estimate in terms of what we might anticipate or what we had last year.
Deborah, I would, we can get back to the board with that information in the business so that we're providing accurate information.
Okay.
Thank you very much, staff. That is much appreciated. So we did have some visitor comments that came after I kind of messed up our whole order. I apologize. But I just wanted to see, do any of my colleagues have any further questions on this item before we move on? Okay. Seeing none at this time. Thank you very much for, for the report. And we are on item two, new course adoptions, I two. Ms. Snap, please begin when you are ready.
Okay. Good evening, President Viasquez, members of the board, Superintendent Kern and Ms. Cunningham. Joining me tonight are the PLI Program Specialists, as well as many of the teachers who created the new courses that you have in Attachment B. And following our presentation, they'll be available to answer any questions that you may have. Tonight, we are presenting the proposed new high school courses for discussion. These courses are designed to ensure student choice and instructional alignment with California state standards. These courses provide a high level of rigor, deeper opportunities for study and college and career readiness. The course request process can be generated in a variety of ways. It can start from the site level by a teacher, a department, a site administrator, or even district content specialist, which many of our courses tonight are from district content specialist. Once the initiator completes the course request packet, school leaders and district departments review the information, recommend changes and approve the application. Once the courses have been vetted by the professional learning, the assessment and evaluation and human resource teams for credentialing, the courses are then presented to curriculum and standards. During that time, they also ask many questions and engage in discussion and recommendation. The goal for new courses specifically, the goal for new courses is focused on providing more opportunity for students to meet the new graduation requirements. And these courses should be A through G aligned, rigorous, engaging, and most of all, relevant for our students. The next generation science standards were adopted in 2013 to create research-based, relevant science standards. These standards give teachers the flexibility to design classroom learning experiences that stimulate students' interest in science and prepare them for college, careers and citizenship. With this in mind, our science teachers had to come together to create new courses that are aligned to the NGSS. With me tonight is Paula Balcom, who will share with you the process that we went through to develop these new NGSS courses. So at this time, I'm going to invite Paula Balcom to join me. Paula, are you there?
Oh. She's now joining us. I at least see her as a participant in the meeting. She's currently muted, however.
I have unmuted myself. I just got
There we go.
I just got promoted to be analyst. So I
Well, welcome.
So I wanted to provide a little bit of context. In the high school NGSS, the, the standards are organized into life science, physical sciences and earth space science domains. And each of these represent a third of the standards. Our California State Framework for Science organizes these standards into two different possible pathways for the courses. There's a four-course pathway option and a three-course pathway option. The three-course pathway option is the one that our district group got together and came to consensus on, which I will describe that process. But there are two distinct pathways that we had to choose between in the process. And the districts do have the flexibility to choose between which pathway is going to provide maximum benefits and opportunities for students. So several years ago, back in the 2017 and 18 school year, we really wanted to provide a strong foundation for teachers to be able to make decisions that were going to be aligned with NGSS. So we provided a variety of professional learning opportunities supported by our local Sacramento area science project. The California Science Teachers Association Conference was in Sacramento that year. So we sent many high school teachers to attend. So we had a lot of professional learning that, that school year. And then in the 2018, 19 school year, last year, we went through the process of making this decision as a district. So we spent two days with a facilitator named Jim Clark, who has brought many other districts in the, in the state through this process. And he really has, he's had a firm grounding in NGSS from the start. He is part of the state rollout team. So he really has equity and access in mind for all students and, and he helped lead us through this process. We spent two release days on November 1st and 2nd. We had teams of three teachers from each school site along with an administrator. The goal was to have three teachers representing earth space science, physical sciences and life science. So we'd have a broad representation. And we used the equity lens that we have in our district to be able to look at them to figure out what are those potential barriers that students might be facing with each of the different courses? And how can we make sure we're ensuring success for all of our students, which would be the best possible pathway? So we spent time analyzing case studies from other districts that were similar to us across California. We compared the instructional segments, the units from the three-course model versus the four-course model courses. And just to clarify that the four-course model courses are separate and distinct courses for earth space science, chemistry, physics and biology, whereas the three-course model are three courses in biology, chemistry and physics, but they have those earth space science standards woven in throughout. So at the end of the process, we came to consensus over those two days to implement the three-course model as our recommendation for the district. What we did next was to have two teams that were formed. One was the NGSS implementation team and the NGSS leadership team. The new courses were developed by the NGSS implementation team and this, these implementation teams consisted of three teachers from each school site, one to support the biology course, one to support the chemistry course and one to support the physics course. And then we got together over the course of three months during this school year, one meeting a month, release days, and the teachers together. So we had approximately eight to 10 teachers for each group and they worked together collaboratively to develop these new courses. So it was a really great process where they had the opportunity to work from the framework of the, the science, what the science framework lays out for California, but then also providing flexibility and adapt, adaptations that are going to meet the needs of all of our schools across the district. We also formed a companion NGSS leadership team. And that team consists of one teacher from each high school, along with various district representatives, our lead counselor. We brought in SJTA leadership as well to provide feedback in that process. And that group got to hear all of the, the progress on the courses, got to ask questions and bring the information back to their school sites for further discussion. So it was a really rigorous process that we went through with the goal of really making these courses relevant, engaging and meaningful for students. And at the same time, making sure all of our schools had say and input throughout the process. We would go to the next slide. And so these new courses, the, the tenants of NGSS specify that we have all standards for all students. And when we had a separate earth science course that was not UC approved, it was not a course that was supporting students for application to college. A lot of our college-bound students did not take that earth space science course. And so they were losing a third of the NGSS standards because they weren't engaging with that particular course. This new, this new pathway aligns those earth science standards within the biology course, which is called the Biology of the Living Earth. The earth science standards are woven into the chemistry course and the physics course as well. And the new courses are called Chemistry in the Earth System and then Physics of the Universe. All of these courses are in alignment. There's three years of the science pathway and there's also three years for our science graduation requirements. So there's strong alignment with that pathway so that really we do have students taking all of the standards. And then in addition, all of these courses are designed to be, they are D-approved courses. So students will graduate college and career-ready if they take the standard pathway. And then they are also aligned with our state assessment, which is called the California Assessment Test or CAST. And finally, they, they really lead to a higher level of engagement because the earth science standards are interwoven throughout the courses in a way that provides application and more opportunities to understand the concepts. We also have parallel honors courses that were written. They use the same standards, but they do provide opportunities for more in-depth math research and the opportunity for teachers to have some flexibility to pull in standards that are outside the scope of NGSS for additional pieces in the, in the course. I do want to say that students also with our graduation requirements, they will have the flexibility to opt into an AP course if they wish for what, for one or more of the courses. And they also may opt in or out of the honors courses if they're offered at the sites as well and based on their interests. So I will be able to answer questions at the end of the presentation.
Thank you, Paula. So in addition to the science pathways, which were really a huge lift for all of us, we're also presenting new courses in world language, math and CTE. Detailed descriptions of each of these courses are in Attachment B. And all of these courses do meet our A through G requirements and create more opportunities for student choice. So as I mentioned earlier, many of the initiators for these courses are with us. I know it's a bit clunky to invite them to speak, but I, I really appreciate the work that the teachers put in to create these new courses. So if we're not able to get them in, I just want to make sure we are able to really show our gratitude about the work that all of these teachers did in building these courses. So we're available to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Schnapp. And prior to board members offering their questions or comments, I am going to see if we have any visitor comments on this item. Mr. Allen, are there any visitor comments for item I two?
We've not received any written visitor comments. However, I do see one hand raised from our attendees. And again, if you are in the meeting with us as an attendee and would like to offer a comment on this item, we would ask that you raise your hand at this time. You may do so if you are on a desktop platform by clicking the raise hand button located at the bottom of the participants list. You may have to click the participants button on the toolbar at the bottom of your screen to make that show up. If you are on a mobile device, the raise hand button is typically a button on that toolbar at the bottom of your screen. And if you've dialed in tonight, star nine will raise your hand. And with that, President Viasquez, we have one hand that is raised.
Thank you very much for those instructions, Mr. Allen. I see Chris Cosatorto, who has raised his hand. So Chris, when you are ready, please again.
It was a mistake. I am so sorry.
That's okay. Thank you for joining us. At the moment, I don't see any other hands raised, but I'm just going to take a quick pause really quick. I know that the technology can be a challenge to navigate. I still see no hands for this particular item. And I'll just let our attendees know that I'll go ahead and move to, to board member questions and comments. But please, if you'd like to make a comment and figure halfway along the way how to raise your hand or other ways, indicate so, please, please do so and I'll still pause and call on you. With that, yes.
If, if there are questions, Mr. Allen, do, do we just have the attendees unmute themselves or will you need to do that? I just want to make sure we understand the process.
So if we have staff who are attending as attendees and you'd like them to answer a question or participate in a conversation, they would either need to raise their hand or you'll have to let me know so that I can enable their microphones.
Okay, thank you.
And I will be keeping a close eye, as will Mr. Allen on the attendees list for any raised hands. And so actually, you know, Mr. Allen, can you just offer one more time the instructions on how to indicate a raised hand either on the desktop or via phone?
Absolutely. If you are on a desktop, either web browser or the Zoom app on a desktop, the raise hand button is typically at the bottom of the participants list. To display that list, you may need to click on the participants button, which is on the toolbar at the bottom of your screen under where the PowerPoint is currently being shared. If you are on a mobile device, the raise hand button is typically in that black bar at the bottom of your screen. And if you have called in a meeting tonight, star nine will raise your hand for you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Allen. With that, I'll turn to my colleagues for board member questions and comments. I'll begin with Mr. Hernandez.
I'm not, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I had to switch over to my phone, so bear with me. I have no questions, so I will pass, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Ms. Costa.
I had the opportunity to hear each of the teachers speak at particular standards. And I just want to say hats off for the thoughtfulness and the work that they did. Their presentations really helped build the understanding, but also the amount of work that they've done to meet the needs of their students and to offer these courses is really admirable. I would like to ask Ms. Schnapp if you would explain how one school can propose a course, but how it can, has the opportunity to go to other schools, because I think that's important.
Absolutely. Once you approve as a board these courses, we then communicate with all of the high schools, with the counselors and the administrators. all of the high schools, with the counselors and the administrators, and with our department chairs that these courses are now available. Typically, it will take a year for them to build student interest because these these courses that are bringing that we bring forward are really built on that idea of relevancy for students. And so if student interest drives these courses, then they are able to offer them. We also have, you know, the credentialing issue. So if there is a course that students are interested in, who don't have the right credentials, there's a lot of pieces that come into it as we build these courses at the high school level.
Thank you for adding that. That's all I had.
Thank you, Ms. Costa. Ms. Creason.
Thanks. And I'm sorry if I you spoke on this and I missed it, but can you speak on the CNS Curriculum and Standards Committee role in this process? Any input they may have had? And, you know, what was the role to get us to this point?
They're heavily involved in really asking equity-driven questions about these courses, and then also that the idea of access and opportunity for all students. We keep in mind the the new graduation requirements. And so many of their questions are really focused on, do all students have access to these courses? They ask really thoughtful, intentional questions that help us as we move forward with the process about making sure that all students have the opportunity to take these courses.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Creason. Dr. McKibben, we do have one public comment who has indicated a desire to speak while we've been while we've been in discussion. Are you okay with me jumping to them, or would you like?
Absolutely. They go ahead. Anytime you're ready to get to me, I'm here.
Appreciate your patience, Dr. McKibben. I see Mr. Tom Nelson has a raised hand. So Tom, please begin with your public comment when you would like. You're currently on mute.
Let me see. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I just had a question because I recall several years ago, there was, I think, discussions or plans to have a basically a district-wide course catalog of all courses. And I'm thinking especially now with distance learning, where, say, a student that may be enrolled at a particular high school that doesn't offer a course, for example, French, that whether there might be the possibility, if distance learning continues, that students would be able to take these courses that are traditionally associated with a particular high school, even though they may be enrolled at a different school. So that's that's my question, and thank you for taking my comment.
We do have a district-wide course catalog through our student information system, but the high schools focus on they have course catalogs for each of the high schools. CTE also has a course catalog that they put together so that students have, especially for the middle school students, so that they can really have an informed decision about what each of the high schools offer. And so there's many different ways that students can access the different courses at the different high schools.
Thank you, Ms. Schnapp. At this time, I don't see any additional public comments. So, Dr. McKibben, back to you when you are available.
Yes. Question for Ms. Schnapp and maybe others. I agree with Mrs. Morgan and her comment about this being the most exciting meeting of the year. And and watching over the years, particularly since the new graduation requirements, how many new courses there are. And kudos to all of the staff members that that have put in the incredible amount of time that it takes to put together a course, as well as the imagination and so forth. Do we have any? I see there are 16 courses being recommended here. Do we have any idea of approximately how many new courses we have created, you know, since the new graduation requirements? And and I also know that many of these courses came to become part of our CTE system and enrichment. Do we have any guess on the number of courses that our teachers have put together to invigorate and excite our students?
Yeah, we started collecting that information three years ago. And once these are approved, I can then provide, we have a spreadsheet and we can share that with you. It's well over 50 courses at this point, over the last, I would say, four years, really from the induction with the new math pathways that we started. So I can share that with you guys if you would like.
I think it would be pretty impressive. I'd love to see it and so forth. My second question has to do with the the science standards and the parallel courses between the general course, if you will, the honors course, and the AP course. And are there any courses that are prerequisites for other courses? Or can you could you start as an honors course? Could you start as an AP course in each of the three areas? Or or are there all kinds of variations in terms of who would choose what course?
You are correct that there are options. So students entering each of those science pathways can choose what the regular core course or the honors course. It is recommended for AP that they have the core course first. So we would recommend the honors biology before they move into an AP course. Ms. Falcon, did I answer that well?
Yeah, and I was just going to add that the AP courses are governed governed by the College Board. So they often have specific prerequisites that they recommend through College Board as well.
And my understanding is the AP courses do not include the earth science elements that the courses that we that are being proposed here do?
That is correct. They do not have the earth science woven throughout. But they also have a fully different syllabus that is aligned to the College Board.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. McKibben. And I just want to pause quickly and see if there are any other members of the public wishing to speak at this time. I do not see anybody who has used the Raise Your Hand function at this time. And, Mr. Allen, we have not received any emails regarding this item. Is that correct? Okay, well, with that, my colleagues were pretty thorough. So I only want to extend my thanks to staff for bringing this forward, both the presenters who offered it, but also I know in our attendee list at the moment, we've got quite a number of educators who put in quite a bit of work bringing these forward. So to them, on behalf of the board, I want to extend my thanks to all of our community members who participated in this process. Also want to say thank you. It's exciting to go back and revisit things like new courses. Thank you all very much for all the hard work that went into this. This item is scheduled for action on May 26. Is it the will of the board to have this item return on consent?
Yes.
I see universal head nodding.
Yes.
I got a yes from Mr. Hernandez. Ms. Creason, thumbs up. Great. It will return as a consent item. With that, we are at item J, Board Report. Do any of my colleagues wish to give a board report at this time? Ms. Costa.
I had the amazing experience today. I got to be a third grader in Sarah Marat's classroom, Arlington Heights, grade three. I have to tell you, this was my first distance learning class, and I couldn't have had a better first experience. First of all, she built community with her students in a way that made every child just be engaged and part of that classroom. They shared something that had happened during the week. They talked about, she asked them a question about how they were getting exercised during the week. And then she asked them how the academic work was going, both for reading and math, and did they have any questions or concerns? Then she started into a lesson on elapsed time. And anybody who's tried to teach third graders elapsed time knows it is not a quick and easy lesson. And yet, she managed to break the lesson down into parts using both video and anchor charts so that the students did understand. She checked their understanding with hand signals and verbal responses. And then she ended with telling the students where they could see the videos again, where the anchor charts would be, so that their parents would be able to help them as they continued on with the work. And as with all little kids, they wanted to share at the end again, and so she allowed them to raise hands and cheer. I think the three things that probably touched me the most was a little girl who started the day, actually, with, I lost a tooth. And it was so normal for elementary, but it felt it felt wonderful to see kids still engaging in kid kind of things that are important to them. The most unusual thing for me was the cat decided to sit in on the classroom. And I definitely would be mad if I had visited her classroom at Arlington Heights. I think a really encouraging thing, one little boy was having trouble with technology, and his older brother came in during the class and helped him with the technology. And I thought, wow, this is what it's all about, folks. So my sense of distance learning, I want to thank staff for making this available to us. I certainly felt so much better after I saw one of the classrooms. I hope to visit other classrooms as well. In terms of, I have two more items. Celebrations haven't really been a focus in these times of COVID, because we've really been focusing on critical needs for kids. So I just want to mention, because I know all of us have sent our thoughts and good wishes, Administrative Professional Day was April 22. Day of the Principal, which you would think if I had been a principal, I would know when Day of the Principal is, was May 1. Day of the Teacher for the Nation was May 5. Day of the Nurse, May 6. And in California, the California Day of the Teacher is tomorrow, May 13. So to all of those people in all of those categories, sincere thank you for all that you do on behalf of our kids. We really appreciate you. I I really am sorry the celebrations can't be here right now, but they will come back. And then lastly, I really want to acknowledge Mr. Allen. The these board meetings are stressful to start with. And I don't think the public realizes all of the work that goes into the virtual meetings. Mr. Allen spent better part of last week researching models after the Zoom bomb at the previous board meeting. And he found a model that would really keep the platform the cleanest of all the possible ones. And then actually tried it out with Curriculum and Standards so that we knew that it worked. And even with all of that, things don't always go the way we want right now. And so thank you for holding your cool and for leading us through all this. We really appreciate you. I I can't imagine doing what any one of our staff members are doing right now. So, millions. And that's my report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Costa. Do any of my other colleagues wish to give a board report? Dr. McKibben?
Yes, I want to, I had the opportunity to go behind the scenes when I needed to pick up my computer to Arcade Middle School and watch Joseph Fraser and and the other folks from Technology putting together and getting the computers ready for the summer and beyond. And just wanted to recognize the enormous work that they've done, you know, putting out what, some 23,000 Chromebooks and and repairing them, going well beyond when something went wrong to the schools and so forth. And that the IT folks and the classified staff have just been amazing, even to their their hardest student, me, in terms of computers and so forth. Thank you very much to them.
Thank you, Dr. McKibben. Ms. Creason.
Thanks. Just two quick things. First, I want to share that I was able to participate in a webinar. Encina partnered with some outside agencies to do a webinars focused on COVID-19 resources. So resources included, you know, rent assistance, food assistance. The Mexican consulate was on to talk about immigration issues. It was really well done. It was about an hour. They had several of these. I participated in two. They did one in English. I know they did one in Spanish. I believe they're going to try to do a couple more languages. It's my understanding that the recordings are going to be posted on the Encina website. And they they really did have some really good information. So just wanted to acknowledge that. Also, wanted to just do a shout out to the seniors. I'm thinking about you. We're all thinking about you. I'm starting to see the really cool signs pop up all over town. And I just saw a Merrill Loma senior sign right down my street. I didn't know one of my kids were here. So I'm gonna go down with my 13-year-old, and we're gonna chalk up in front of their house. And so I just want to acknowledge that it's just been, you know, it's not the best scenario. You know, I wish we could do so much more, but I am happy that stuff is starting to come together. I am excited about the virtual graduation. And again, I wish it could be more. And maybe it can be more later when we're allowed to get together again. No one said it can't. So, you know, I'm still holding out hope for that. But I am really, really happy that and thankful that staff was so quickly able to put together a virtual event for our kids. So at least there's something for them before they all run off to their next chapter. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Creason. Mr. Hernandez?
I just want to make a quick comment to the entire staff and this, you know, this situation that we're put in. And, you know, everyone is affected. It's a dominant effect on every single person in our district. And and I got a call, actually, on my way to my office for this to prepare for this meeting, it was from a teacher. And the teacher wanted me to know how grateful she was that she works for a district and how well that our administration have been communicating with our union partners. And the that communication line has been very well received, and they feel like they're a part. To get a report like that from a teacher is very, very nice, and especially in a time like this. And, you know, as you guys well know, we get emails, we get calls. But to get a call like that to saying, hey, we are, we have a great district, and we are light years ahead of other people. It was great to hear. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. I also just want to echo my thanks on behalf of the board, of the staff that really have kept the trains running as best as we can to serve our community and our students. And in particular, both as a PSA, but as a thank you, I wanted to acknowledge that we actually have an increase in availability and frequency of our food bank partners at Encina, starting today, actually, I believe. Instead of a monthly food bank distribution, they're going to be doing it weekly there from 9:00 to 11:00 at Encina. I know that a lot of this is a tremendous collaboration between both the staff there and the community. And so I just want to extend the thanks to all the partners making that happen, including Sacramento Food Bank and Family Services and our tremendous staff over at Encina statewide. We've actually, we've seen a demand of almost 73% on our food bank, on our food bank allotments, which is just incredible. And there's not really an immediate end in sight. And so just continue to be really proud of all of the the staff that have gone above and beyond to keep our children fed. It really is kind of down to the basics right now. And appreciate all of our community members that have made sure that that gets extended to our families as needed. And I know school sites have gone above and beyond to make sure that the And I know school sites have gone above and beyond to make sure that the service and food goes beyond those food bank sites, but just wanted to acknowledge that and say thank you. With that, we are at item K, future agenda items. Do any board members wish to add any items to the future agenda at this moment? Seeing none, we are at item L, visitor comments. Mr. Allen, are there any visitor comments?
President Viascas, we have had two written comments submitted on non-agendized items after our first public comment section. So if it is the board's pleasure, I'd be happy to read those at this time.
I believe it is. I saw some head nods. But I do want to ask, just again, accommodating our new platform, do you mind prior to reading those, offering instructions one more time on how to raise hand and offer final comment for those that are on our Zoom platform before reading them?
Absolutely. If you are attending the meeting with us here live and would like to offer a comment on an item that was not on tonight's agenda, you are invited to do so at this time. To indicate that you would like to do so, please raise your hand by clicking the Raise Hand button. It can be found at the bottom of the participant list. If you are on a desktop platform, you may need to click the Participant button at the bottom of the screen to make that participant list display. If you are on a mobile device, you may need to click the Raise Hand button at the bottom of your screen. And if you have called into the meeting, star nine will raise your hand. And with that, it looks like we have had one hand raised if you'd like to take that comment before I read the other two, President Viascas.
Yes, thank you very much for reiterating those directions. And with that, we have been joined by Karen Smith. Karen, when you are ready, please begin.
Thank you. It is also Classified Employee Week, May 17 through the 23rd. So I just wanted to give a shout out to all the classified employees.
Thank you very much, Karen. And I know that the board extended thank you to all of the classified employees. And certainly, this is the height of award season, and I know we all wish that we were just crowded into those to that boardroom and all of our acknowledgement ceremonies. So thank you very much for representing our classified employees. And I know on behalf of the board, I hope you'll extend our thanks and appreciation for them as well. We have had one additional public comment. Angela Luna. Angela, please begin when you are ready.
Hi there. Thank you. I would like to recognize Nicole Nadez and Jen Cox as a practitioner in this district and moving towards distance learning. Having to gain agency with my technology skills has been a journey. And I believe without the two of them, I would not be able to serve my students as well as I am currently. They are outstanding. They have expertise that goes beyond anything I've ever seen. They're amazing teachers in their own right, and they're able to deliver instruction to adult learners in a way that I truly appreciate, and I think that they need to be acknowledged. I've attended several trainings with them. And it's because of them that I am able to serve my students. And I want to appreciate them publicly and acknowledge them. So thank you for setting up the hub. I visit it daily. I'm constantly going to the trainings again to better serve my students. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Luna. Seeing no other hands raised at this time, Mr. Allen, do you want to read the public comments that were received via electronic email?
I'd be happy to. Our first one arrived at 7:29 PM. It reads, "The California Latino School Board Association has voted numerous times to support single-member districts. At-large districts are unlawful where they would violate the California Voting Rights Act. Justice should not be delayed by misleading comments to the governor that imply Mr. Rafferty was being unreasonable. The statement was used to mislead the governor and possibly the San Juan School Board into delaying the transition to single-member district. The scowl victimized the voters of your district. We urge the San Juan Unified School District to stay the course and bring real democracy to the school district. Fairness and justice should not be delayed, especially for the wrong reasons. Respectfully yours, Norma Alcala, Executive Board Member, California Latino School Board Association." Our second emailed comment was received at 7:56 PM. It reads, "San Juan Unified School District Board of Trustees, the Chicano Latino Caucus of the California Democratic Party-sponsored resolutions adopted unanimously by the CDP to oppose at-large elections and urge all districts to adopt single-member districts. At-large elections are a vestige of a shameful time in American history when Jim Crow laws were used to suppress minority voting. You would not tolerate Confederate flags in your classrooms, so why tolerate at-large elections for even one more election? Bring democracy to the San Juan Joint School District in 2020. Do not be a party to procrastination that only serves to suppress fair elections. Your duties to the people of your district provide fair elections. Carlos Alcala, Chair, Chicano Latino Caucus, California Democratic Party." And those are the two comments that we have received, President Viascas.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. At this moment, I do not see any other hands raised. We do not need to return to a closed session, so with that, seeing no other public comment, we are adjourned.